heartbroken at the senseless killing of George Floyd in Minneapolis. The protests that we've, that have followed around the world and right here in McMinnville speaks volumes about the systemic racism that shows up in our public institutions. As a city council, we support the Black Lives Matter movement and are taking the following steps to identify and dismantle the institutional racism within our own organization. We've got three things that we are doing. We're training employees about implicit bias, systemic racism, equality, and inclusion, ensuring safe and respectful environments on our advisory boards and commissions, partnering with experts in diversity, equality, inclusion, so that we can evaluate our policies and practices through a racial equality lens. We recognize that we have much to learn as an organization and as individuals. We are committed to that learning and making McMinnville a city that is safe, welcoming, equitable for all of our residents. Thank you for allowing me to read that. One thing that we've not done on Zoom is have the Pledge of Allegiance, and I think it might be appropriate that we do that this evening. So I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance, and if you would just follow me. I pledge allegiance, not to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, equal, visible, liberty, justice, for all. Thank you, a lot of food, we made it through, so, thank you for bearing, but that was a good thing to do this evening. We have a proclamation this evening, and so the proclamation is LGBTQ Pride Month, and so Kylie, I'm going to turn it over for you to introduce that, and then we'll do the proclamation. Kylie?
Hi, thank you. So it's imperative, even more so today, given the civil unrest, the nationwide protests happening against racism, and police brutality toward people of color, that our city leaders ensure all members of our community are valued and welcomed. LGBTQIA individuals are more likely to experience discrimination, harassment, and other disadvantages in all aspects of their lives, from housing to healthcare and everything in between. Those disadvantages are multiplied when their identity intersects with other identities, such as their mental or physical ability or health, their gender, their age, the color of their skin, or the country in which they were born. Publicly proclaiming June as Pride Month, along with numerous cities across our country, demonstrates McMinnville's commitment to our core values of accountability, stewardship, courage, and equity. I want to thank Pam Davis, who is the Assistant City Manager in Boulder, Colorado, for assisting with the language in this proclamation. She served as an extra set of eyes for me as we were drafting that. Pam's also the leader of Civic Pride, which is the first nationally recognized LGBTQIA+ plus professional association for local government management. So with that, I will turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Kylie. I will read the proclamation designating June as Pride Month. Whereas the fight for equality continues for lesbians, gays, bisexuals, transgender, and queer in questioning the LGBTQIA+ and other historically marginalized members of our community, and the responsibility falls on each of us to form a more equitable and inclusive society. And whereas the city of McMinnville pledges to honor, exhibit, and otherwise live out our core values of stewardship, accountability, courage, and equality, and whereas June 28, 2020, marks the 51st anniversary of the Stonewall uprising, six days of demonstration led by Marsha P. Johnson, a black transgender woman sparked by the targeting and arrest by police of lesbian, gay, and transgender bar participants in violation of their civil rights, an event widely recognized at the beginning of the modern gay right movement. And whereas June 2, 2000, President Bill Clinton declared June to be Gay and Lesbian Pride Month to commemorate the June 28, 1969 Stonewall uprising. And on June 1, 2009, President Barack Obama expanded this commemoration by declaring June to be the Gay Pride, Bisexual, and Transgender Pride Month. And whereas the city of McMinnville stands with the LGBTQIA+ community in the struggle to ensure equal treatment for all, to defend and advocate for LGBTQIA+ rights of human rights, and whereas despite the extraordinary and inspiring progress, LGBTQIA+ Americans continue to face discrimination simply for being who they are. And whereas the city of McMinnville commits to advocate for protections for all LGBTQIA+ individuals, to make our city a place where all people, regardless of their sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression, are treated with dignity and respect. Now therefore, I Scott A. Hill, Mayor of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim the month of June as Pride Month. In witness thereof, I have here's force at my hand, this ninth day of June 2020. Signed, Scott A. Hill, Mayor of McMinnville. Thank you. That takes us to that part in our program this evening where we will have comments from citizens, and this is where individuals may speak on any topic other than a matter that is in litigation, a quasi judicial land use matter, a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. Announce your comments, your comments will be limited to three minutes per person, and we're going to take a total of 30 minutes this evening. If you wish to speak, raise your hand feature in Zoom to request to speak. Once your turn is up, announce your name, unmute the mic, and you will be acknowledged by our city reporter Claudia, who will announce you. Now, we may have a number of individuals at the McMinnville City Hall, and then you can come up and to the mic identify yourself. So again, anyone that would like to speak to the council this evening? And I'll turn it over to you, Claudia.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Bill Whitman, resident of McMinnville. My purpose for being here tonight is to encourage the leadership of this city to maintain a strong and well-trained law enforcement department. I feel that way not only about the city of McMinnville, but also about Yamhill County and the state of Oregon. Now, what happened in Minneapolis with that police department and that incident was truly unforgivable and absolutely terrible, terrible thing. But that action does not represent law enforcement officials throughout the United States. And I believe that if they are well-trained and given consideration, that those kinds of incidents not only will be lowered, but also we will have the benefit of having extremely well-trained individuals involved in our law enforcement community. Now, I believe that part of that training has to be in public relations and also in citizen relations. Whenever they stop an automobile for some violation or purpose, whenever they come in contact with an individual, my belief is that they are representing the city of McMinnville in a guest relation or a customer servant standing. I spent 50 of my 81 years in the food service business, and I don't believe that the action that took place in Minneapolis represents all law enforcement any more than I believe that a manager that I hired, who took me for $50,000 one summer, represents all the restaurant managers in the state of Oregon, the city of McMinnville, or the U.S. So please, as you look towards the budget, please maintain a strong law enforcement community, because it is a help, and our citizenship deserves to have that help. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please state your name.
My name is Julius, and I live in McMinnville. I guess I had more of a question for you guys to maybe think about. I know we're talking about police, but I'm wondering in the schools, before these people get to police, is there anything we can be doing in the classroom to teach about stereotypes and unfair biases, so that we can avoid racism as a community and as a government? Maybe even counselors, counselors in schools that are not white, that can maybe have a different perspective and communicate differently with the different students? I think those kinds of things are more important than letting the problems carry out into adulthood and then expressed through different authoritarian figures. So maybe think about hitting the schools before other things. That's all.
Thank you for your comments. Claudia, next?
Yes, we have Brittany Reese, who's on Zoom, will unmute her mic.
Okay.
Hi there, can you hear me?
We can. Brittany?
Okay, sorry, I'm gonna get out of my kid zone real quick. Thank you so much for having me. This is, just wanted to thank the city, specifically Parks and Rec, for opening up the Parks and Rec programs, and also suggest that a way to recoup losses, I would love to see if there's any way we can work as a community to open up the Parks and Rec sport programs over the summer. I know there's a lot involved in that decision, but I would, I know myself and many other families speak about it daily, about how it has impacted their children. So if we can support the city by opening up those sport programs, I want to suggest that we look at, but actually tonight, I'm just thanking the city for moving swiftly to open those playgrounds once the guidelines are updated, and that's really my call. Thank you.
Thank you, Brittany. And then Susan, if you'll take note, maybe reach out to her, and I know you've had some dialogue that you put on your website or on your Facebook page, but maybe that might be appropriate. Claudia, next?
Yes, we have Christopher Anderson on Zoom, will unmute his mic.
Okay.
Hello, my name's Christopher Anderson. I'm at LeFaire, McMinnville. I would, according to the budget, I'd like for you guys to consider that we look to actually keep the budget of the police and police department in line with about 10% of other services, and therefore allow police services to gather assistance from those services, like social workers. I also ask that you guys consider resourcing other organizations for police not policing themselves, because currently we use a for-profit police organization lexicon in order to evaluate their current, how they are effective and non-effective in maintaining laws and law and order. I also request that our budget for our police department not include military gear or ghost cars, because a hidden police force is not a police force working for us. I also, I also request that our budgeting not include anything for lawsuits for bad police officers, and also that we do budget freeze on the police department if they do not remove bad cops and do not police themselves. Thank you very much for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Christopher. Claudia, next?
We have Chris Chenoweth on Zoom that will unmute his mic.
Good evening, mayor and counselors, it's good to see you, although I can't be seen. I want to start by saying first, I don't want anything to be misconstrued by what I'm about to say. I find the actions of the police officer in these events that have taken place to be reprehensible, and in no way do I want to have my word somehow come off as if I'm condoning any behavior on his part. That's my disclaimer. I read a post today that got me kind of emotional, got my attention, and I'm going to read a part of that post, and then I'm going to make a about 10-second comment. So, I can get to the right wording here where this is. So please, this is from a police officer, I don't know in what police department, I don't know in what city, it's anonymous, I don't know if it's male, I don't know if they're female, I don't know their gender, I already said that, I don't know their race. But this is toward the end of their comments. So please, please take some of these jobs away from us. Please find someone else to respond to the homeless man on the corner. Please find someone else to respond to the suicidal ex-soldier. Please find someone else to make the death notification to the parents of the teenager who just killed herself in a car crash on her way home from prom. Please find someone else to go check on the child who usually plays outside at this time of day, but you haven't seen since his dad got home slamming doors angry. Please find someone else to help his battered wife escape her relationship. Please find someone else to keep that troubled pre-teen from slipping fully into a life of crime before he can even drive. I'm begging you, please. But until you do, until you do, we'll keep coming. Every time you call, every time you need us, and we'll keep doing our best with what tools you have given us in the system you've built for us. We'll keep showing up, because no one else is going to or is required to. I just wanted to take the time to say to our police department, and if Matt Scales is in the room, to the chief of police specifically, in the midst of everything that's going on, there's a lot of us that are very grateful that we have a police department and for the work that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Mayor, that was it for citizen comment.
Okay. Thank you for those that have made comment this evening. That takes us to our next area on the agenda, which is advice and informational items. And so we'll have reports from counselors on committee and board assignments, and I'm just going to look at my screen and go across. So Sal, I have you first, if you'd like to report out.
Thanks, Mayor, I was having trouble with the mute button there. Yeah, so the report, the Council of Governments met last week, we approved the COG budget. The COG has actually had a really interesting shift during COVID-19. For years, the agency has provided banking services, small business loans, and it's been sort of kicking along for many years without, and it really kind of been a drain on the Council of Government's budget. And this year, because of what happened with COVID-19, they have actually been able to transact several million dollars worth of small business loans that have kept several small businesses able to operate with capital during this period of COVID-19. So really happy that that has been the case with the COG. I also'd like to just briefly take a moment to acknowledge the people who came out today to protest, and have come out several days to protest the killing of Mr. Floyd. The, I've been very impressed by the Chief of Police, Matt Scales, in terms of how he has engaged with people, listened to the concerns that people have had, and has really taken an effort to engage in pro-social dialogue with people who have a lot of legitimate and pent-up concerns about policing in this country, and I really appreciate that. I also wanted to note for people who may be listening that I was asked to find out what the McMinnville Police Department policies are on eight immediate actions that are being recommended for reform. And I was really pleased to see when Chief Scales sent me his note about that, that most, if not all, of those eight reforms are already practices in the McMinnville Police Department, and I think that is a testament to Chief Scales' leadership. And I would just want to make one comment about, we've had, I've taken probably 50 or 60 emails, I think probably everybody on the council has, asking to defund the police. I believe that police reform is needed, but I think that that is not going to be an inexpensive or easy process. The kinds of wraparound services that are needed to deal with homelessness and mental health issues in this community, the upfront evaluation is going to require different kinds of staffing than we currently have, and I think it's going to be a long, you know, not a short-term process, but a long-term process to make the changes that we need to move that in a direction of even more community policing than we're already doing today. So with that, I'll just leave it, but I do appreciate Chief Scales and his leadership, particularly at this time.
Thank you, Sal. Let's move over to Wendy, I have you up on my screen next. You're on mute? Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we did have a MURAC meeting, yay! So we had some great discussion, we, a lot of what we were talking about was around supporting how the MURAC could do special programs to support post-COVID recovery for businesses. The first one was the MDA came to us to talk to us about a COVID Recovery Funds Grant that they'd like to go out for to help the Third Street businesses with getting PPE and sanitizing supplies to make their customers feel safe when they come to their establishments. And there's a match that the MURAC can participate in to help make that happen. We did have some questions that really were around if the benefit could extend to all businesses within the urban renewal area, but in the end, MURAC was generally in favor of supporting the grant, and we'll probably see something come back more further in future meetings on that. The MEDP also wanted us to look at extending the urban renewal boundary, district boundary, there's one particular parcel that a private investor developer is looking at developing, and it looked like it would be a win-win for us to be able to support that development with some dollars, and also for it to benefit the tax base in the urban renewal. And so there was some discussion around that, the MURAC members after the discussion around that parcel felt like it was beneficial to all parties to look at extending that, the boundary to that parcel. And then the last thing we talked about was COVID Recovery Facade Improvement Grant. We did a similar facade improvement grant that was for a certain period of time for the Northeast Gateway area to encourage development. The proposal was to have a grant that had significantly less investment required from the property owners, and a larger proportion from the city, so that it would encourage people who were getting ready to open up again, or just opening up again, to refresh their facades at this time, and so it would be time, only for a certain period of time, limited time, and the MURAC committee was also in favor of doing that. They thought there would be some real benefit to seeing lots of freshening of facades going on, and that it was a way that we could help businesses downtown with the MURAC money. And so those were the primary things for MURAC. Does that mean I have my time's up?
Nope.
You're shut off. So the other thing I'd just like to acknowledge, I will, I thought I would talk a little bit more about the responses to some of those emails in our budget meeting, so I won't go into that in detail now, but I'll share my thoughts on that when we get into the budget section. But I would like to acknowledge our citizens and our police force with regards to the response to the heinous killing of Mr. Floyd. We, across the country, we see a lot of vigils and demonstrations that wound up being violent and not very respectful of each other, and I think it just is a testament to our citizens, our community, and to the police department that there's open dialogue around an issue that's a really difficult issue, and that together, we're going to be able to find solutions in the way that this, the way that the perspectives are being presented enables it for us to continue to have dialogue, and that's where we're going to find the most effective solution. So I just really appreciate our town and our police department even more after observing how we've worked together on processing this. So just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you, Wendy. Let's move over to Kelly, I've got you next on my screen.
I don't have a lot to report tonight, I do want to state that Black Lives Do Matter, and I want to thank Matt for sending out the letter. I spent a fair amount of time this afternoon just emailing everybody who emailed me with his response, so I hope you get it and read it, and know that we really are working on this. But I feel like some of the issues are, you know, we've already kind of responded to them.
Thank you, Kelly. Let's move over to Remy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great news to report in that the emergency board did end up releasing $200 million into the state of Oregon for all states, counties, cities. Of that, $50 million was immediately called upon that could be used, and of that, $1.3 million is headed to YCAP in emergency rental assistance. Along with YCAP receiving this $1.3 million from the emergency board, we did ask the emergency board, in considering the release of these dollars, to change the initially proposed criteria, which part of that criteria to qualify for this rental assistance would be that your household would be earning 50% of the area median income. And we did ask the emergency board to increase that to 80% of the area median income, thereby making many, many more of our citizens, especially those who are currently out of work, eligible for these rental assistance dollars. The emergency board chose to make that increase, and so YCAP is not yet able to start issuing those checks, but our citizens need to know if they are in need of rental assistance. We have the most dollars we have ever had to support our McMinnville families, our Yamhill County families, with rental assistance dollars to allow them to focus on stabilizing their households in other ways, through focusing on work, mental health, et cetera. So that is a huge feather in YCAP's hat, so to speak. Not to understate it, it's not a feather, it's a tremendous amount of financial support for our area that should bring a tremendous amount of housing stability, and I'm very grateful to everybody at YCAP that did the hard work to help secure those dollars for our area. That is my biggest update, really. We did have a McMinnville Affordable Housing Task Force meeting as well, we're continuing with a lot of work we've been doing. I guess I should say that, you know, should say that, you know, I think we're all aware that the governor has not yet called a special session and it's somewhat of a question mark. However, if that special session does get called, it is likely that House Bill 4001 will be brought back because the monies in that bill are also relevant to COVID-related expenses. And that would be the reason to call the special session. There is a fair amount of resistance to calling that special session as special sessions, I believe this is right, don't have the same timeframes around them as the regular session and the short session. So there is some concern of entering the session without a lot of parameters of what would be its stop time or date. And if it was called, it would be specifically to address COVID-related issues. A lot of, a lot of communities out there are talking about just youth sports and how and when youth sports are going to come back. And I've been pleased to be getting regular updates from our Parks and Rec Director. And so I look forward to hearing more from our department heads that have been, who've had new things coming onto their own plates. A lot of communities are dealing with the same, same issues. And then, Mr. Mayor, to affirm what you've already said and to add my, my voice to the choir is that yes, that the city of McMinnville is attuned to systemic racism. And I and we do support the Black Lives Matter movement. And I'm glad that we've already started steps such as DEI training for city leadership, the regular rotation of DEI training that happens within our police force. And, and that I, I know that as a city, we will continue to self-evaluate and, and that I and that we are committed to identifying and dismantling institutional racism within our own organizations. I also, like Counselor Peralta, had received correspondence on eight-count wait and then forwarded that to our Chief of Police and was grateful to get a very thorough response on those policies and would hope that he'll be able to share those with us this evening, or I know that he will if there's time in his report. So thank you for preparing that and allowing us to respond to our citizens broadly. And to our citizens who didn't receive emails back from me today, my count is at around 100 emails today that just from citizens on, on this one issue, not related to any of the other council work or other correspondence. So do know that I have read your emails. I, and I am responding to you in this format at this time. And I have more thoughts as we move forward, but that's my council report. Thank you.
Thank you, Remy. Let's move over to Zach.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the time. On pure council committee updates, Landscape Review Committee, no, nothing major to report. Not liaising on the Historic Landmark Committee anymore. McMinnville Community Media, we had a big update last time and no, nothing to update there other than they're working hard on COVID to make sure everything that we're doing is getting out there and doing a good job to continue and push out streaming content that concerns local citizens. The MAC PAC, we had a great meeting and talked a lot about the MAC PAC. So just in case anybody knows, that's the discussion forming around Parks and Recreation and the larger package of kind of our facilities, what programs we're going to be offering and how we go about the discussion about, do we build a new community, the Aquatic Center, what does that look like? Where would it be? Is it just a community center? That bigger discussion. We entered a programming phase discussion a few days ago, last week, Thursday, was programming-heavy, which was really fun to talk about. And we also continued to improve the discussion and the creation of the lens of that which we're going to make all these decisions through, discussions around, are we creating safe places? Are we thinking about everything? Are we considering everyone in our decisions and in our selections for programming, for facilities, for locations of facilities? So it's, it's been a really robust discussion that has a lot of potent parallels to what's going on now. So it's been interesting to have. Everyone on that committee is really excited and it's a good, good reminder of doing good things. And that's kind of my council committee updates. I would echo everything that we've all been saying. Mr. Mayor, appreciate your statement. You prepared and read. That was a delight. And all my previous counselors' updates, including Counselor Grabkin before me's phrasings were really good. And I would echo all that and our councils and cities' support for the Black Lives Matter movement. And I'm looking forward to hopefully, I guess during our budget, hearing a more robust discussion on the responses to the myriad of emails we've been getting. And I've been reading and engaging in some good discussions. And so I'd like to commend our, our city and our citizenry for a good, healthy discussion that's been, been engaging and challenging and pushing. And we've certainly heard you. And I'd also like to tip my hat to the, to the chief. I've watched, watched his remarks on video from the vigil at City Hall and found his, his words really moving. And after discussing with him today, I think his phrasing was, he's ready to lean into whatever needs to happen. So I really appreciate his stance and we're ready to, we're ready to be at the table. So that's my update and recorded a discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. Let's move over to Adam.
First, this subject, the Black Lives Matter movement, what was the council's name? Your comments start off nightmare.
Adam, we're having a tough time hearing you. And I see that he's fallen off. So we'll, we'll come back to Adam if he comes back on. Let me just do a brief update. I want to share this, the last two weeks, I've been involved in a number of LOC meetings as we have been discussing the upcoming annual conference that's going to be held in October. And this will be the first virtual conference that LOC has, has, is going to undertake. And the conference, the breakout sessions are going to be on October 15th, October 16th, with board meetings and other meetings on Tuesday and Wednesday. They're half-day sessions. And so those that have had a hard time not being able to go to the conference just because of not being able to get off of work, this may be much more attainable. We've set the conference program and we solidified that today. The cost will be $29 to attend the virtual conferences. We've also, over the last, well, two months, we've been working on various committees that the LOC on setting the legislative agenda for this upcoming year. I'm sitting on the Energy, Environmental, and Transportation Committees. And we finished this week, all of those discussions. And the other six committees are finishing theirs up. And then we'll be sending that out to cities to rank the things that they feel are important for us to advocate at LOC for, to the legislature when they are in session. I'd also have had an opportunity to meet individually or with Jeff, with the hospital so that we know the capacity there and great capacity. They have PPE. So our hospital in this epidemic is, is well positioned to take care of any of our needs there. Had an opportunity this week to meet with the chamber and solidifying our relationship and the things that they're working on. Today, I had an opportunity to meet with MEDP and talking about economic development and what Scott Cooper is doing. He shared with me that it is just amazing that there's more economic development activity going on right now than the whole time he's been here in McMinnville. There's active, active companies looking at industrial space out in the industrial area. And as Wendy had mentioned, came to MEDP and asking us to expand our urban renewal area to include the former Mission Building on Lafayette. And because the grow, the grow entity that was there, Marijuana Grow Entity, they've left. And now that building is for sale. And there's some interest in that. And we'd like that to be in the urban renewal area because of the growth that's going to be happening there. Lastly, I'd just share two things. Every Friday, LOC is doing the COVID Conference Call at 10:05. And for those that have joined that, that is an hour that's just packed with information. Last week, we had a report from Peter Defazio's office, Edward Gallin, who is the Northwest Regional Director of, for Peter Defazio's Committee on Infrastructure. We talked about infrastructure dollars that are coming for transportation, rail, and other activities. And so if that goes through the legislative process back in DC, we're going to see over a period of time, significant dollars coming in for infrastructure. And that will bring people back to work. And then lastly, on Tuesdays and Fridays at 1 o'clock, the Yamhill County kind of coalition and reporting out from entities within the county continues to happen. So again, let's see. I don't see Adam rejoining us. I'll just ask, Adam, are you on the line? Okay, I don't hear him. And so let's, let's move over to reporting to department heads. And again, I'll try to make sure that I pick everyone up. Susan, enjoyed your presentation. Any other things that you'd like to share with, with council?
I would just let you know that we are working very hard to get things reopened. It takes a lot of work in terms of procuring the right equipment. Sometimes we get 48 hours notice of the guidelines that are in place before they actually say you can open. And so I appreciate everybody's patience while we work through bringing staff back on, figuring out what the new guidelines are. We're going to have some tough conversations about cost recovery, given the new guidelines that are coming down in terms of how many people can be in a facility and how, what the staff to child ratio is, for example. So we're going to be slogging through that over the next few weeks. We do not have a date yet on the pool. That is probably one of the most asked questions I get. But the good news is, you've already heard this tonight, the playgrounds are open again. And we're very, very happy about that. So keep watching our social media for info on that.
Thank you, Susan. And congratulations on being able to move so quickly because I do know that information comes out from the governor's office very quickly and it doesn't give us much time to prepare. Let's move over to Kylie. Report.
Hi there. Not much to report this evening. I do want to let the mayor and council know that we are in the process of scheduling interviews for our new city attorney. So hopefully that goes well in the next week and we'll have an opportunity for our top candidate to engage with the council, either in a meet and greet or maybe in a presentation. So just know that we'll be reaching back out to you all to potentially do that. And we're excited about that. It's been a while. Not that we don't enjoy working with Walt, but I know he wants to officially retire. And I think we've got a great pool of candidates to select from. We're also going to be posting, lateral police officer posting shortly. So I just want to put that out there that we are going to be recruiting in that department as well. And then recruiting back a lot of our lovely Parks and Recreation employees who left us during the COVID-19 crisis. So as we begin to reopen, we'll be bringing some of those folks back on board. So that's about all I've got for tonight.
Thank you, Kylie. Let's move over to Scott Burke.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just to add a couple of things that we've been up to over in IS. So we're kind of past the hump of getting everybody remote. Now we're moving on to the section where we have a city full of hybrid workers now, which presents a whole set of different challenges. So on one side, we've been helping the library get reconfigured for opening up again. We've been running, helping the court run their virtual courtroom, which has gone real well for the last few weeks. We're helping a few different departments with kind of virtual Zoom rooms. And when everybody comes back into work, as, you know, people are slowly filtering into offices, they have two devices to support, so to speak, and two workspaces. And so we're, we're doing our best to balance those two together and make those work. And that requires a lot of new hardware, new webcams, new tools for everybody. And we're doing our best to support the mission of each department.
Thank you, Scott. And while I'm at the Civic Center, is Matt there?
He is here, yes. Stepping up to the mic.
Thank you.
Everybody hear me okay? Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep, you're fine.
Outstanding. Well, just a couple of things. Let me start off with, I know I left you last time we met with the proposition that we were going to promote four corporals in our building the bench of leadership positions. Those four have been identified and they will promote, I believe, the first part of July, excuse me, Officer Echroth, Officer Newhouse, Officer Peters, and Officer Park are the four that were chosen after nine had total applied. Very competitive process. We'll put on, appreciate Kylie's work in HR and the other department heads that work with us in that promotional process. Do you mind, would you guys indulge me for a little bit?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Hey, well, first of all, I think it goes without saying, as the mayor and others have commented, that the work that we've done, I should say, that was put on by Eva Hales, I think it's important that we note, that I give her, her proper kudos because she put on a really excellent event Monday of last week, the vigil for Mr. Floyd. And then Tuesday, we worked with the high school students. Obviously, it was a much bigger group than just high school. It was, it was a large group of, throughout the community. And the communication in both those events have been absolutely tremendous. We work with them and we appreciate their communication and their, their ability to sort of ebb and flow with us, work with us to ensure that our community remains safe and that these vigils or protests, whatever you want to call them, came off without a hitch. And I'm super proud of them. I'm proud of our officers. You may have seen some of them out there, myself included, at them. So, but indulge me with this because I think it's important that I make a statement. And I know some of you maybe had heard this as I spoke after being invited by Eva to provide some police perspective, law enforcement perspective with respect to the vigil of Mr. George. So indulge me here, if you will. And again, if you've heard this, apologize if you haven't. Please bear with me. I want to start off again by reading public condemnation that myself and Mac PD sent out Wednesday following the murder of Mr. Floyd. This is not who we are. Sorry, I get a little emotional. Or what we stand for. We have never trained to do this, nor would it ever be acceptable. We will stand with our fellow citizens condemning these types of actions by those in law enforcement who act in an improper manner. These types of actions are not reflective of the officers who proudly put on their badge each day to protect and serve their communities day in and day out. We will continue to be there for our city and our citizens and are standing up against the actions that took place in Minneapolis. The McMinnville Police Department has worked very hard to gain the trust of our citizens The McMinnville Police Department has worked very hard to gain the trust of our citizens in our community. We have worked hard at building relationships, developing mutual understanding of one another, and we take the pledge to serve and protect very seriously. We recognize that when situations play out nationally, that they cause people in our community to lose trust in their police department. It goes without saying that the actions that occurred on that Monday withdrew a substantial amount of credit the law enforcement profession had. That being said, I know our officers proudly wear their badges each day and would lay down their lives for this community. The majority of our profession signed up for this job to help the communities and be the garden, guardians of the people we serve. Please do not lump us into a category based on the actions of a few. Let's not let these actions, their actions, deter from the value of what we bring to our communities. Unfortunately, the law enforcement community has historically stood silent. That was wrong. We have done a disservice to those we protect and serve, and more importantly, to the persons of color we serve. If true change is going to occur, it's going to take those in leadership roles in law enforcement and all of law enforcement stepping up and leaning into these significant issues. Our silence as a profession has been deafening. Our communities need and expect more from us. They will get more from us. I want to end with this. I am so proud of the officers of MAC PD. I could go on and on about them. I will go on and on about them, I'm sure, when we talk it more at length as this, as this year goes on. But I want you to know that our department, all, everyone that works there, works underneath me, proudly serves this community. We will be there for you in the times that you call. We will be there for everyone, no matter what. You have my promise. And let me tell you this, we will be better. And MAC, we will be better as a profession. Thanks.
Thank you, Chief. And if you could just take back to your department, how much we appreciate. I think there's been numerous accolades given from counselors this evening, but we have trust in you. We know that you are looking out for the best interest of this community. Your force puts their lives on the line every single day, and they have a single focus, and that's to protect and to serve this public. And so if you could take that back to your group, we'd appreciate it. And I would say that each and every one of the counselors would, would echo those words also.
I will do that.
Thank you, Chief. Any, any other department head at the Civic Center?
I'm just following up on something Counselor Dropkin forgot to mention, which is Congresswoman Bonamichi will have three town halls event. June 17th at 6:00 PM, June 18th at 1:00 PM, June 20th at 11:00 AM. For more information on these town hall events, you can go onto Congresswoman's website. You can pre-register and ask questions, get in line to ask questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia. Okay, let's continue to move around. Jennifer, I know you're going to be on the program a little later, but any reporting that you would have for us?
Just to let you know, to echo what Scott said, the municipal court going through the remote has been going really well, and they'll be on their third Wednesday tomorrow. And we're learning a lot and getting better at it every time. And then just in terms of finance, we do have our auditors on site. They are doing remote interim testing this week with us. So that's, that's what's going on with finance.
Thank you, Jennifer. Let's take a look at Heather Richards.
Nothing for me tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, Heather. Have I overlooked any one of the executive team? I know Walt, anything that you would have to add for us this evening?
Mayor, just a couple of short items. First, I want to, I want the council to know that Jennifer and Claudia have done a yeoman's work in translating the council's ordinance on campaign finance into the procedures and assistance that candidates need, who are just going to be filing for elective office here in the coming weeks and months. And so that, that process is going, is going well. Second, the second item is, is that I believe at your next council meeting, you will have in your packet a ordinance, excuse me, a contract to update the Visit McMinnville agreement with the city that is acceptable to the representatives of both, of both Visit McMinnville and the city staff, so for council consideration. So those are the only two items.
Thank you, Walt. Now, before I go to Jeff, I'll just ask if Adam was able to rejoin us?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me now?
You're still a little, a little shaky, but why, why don't you go ahead and try and...
Okay. Let me, maybe I'm better now.
Yeah, that sounds better.
Yeah, so we haven't had an Airport Commission meeting. I come, we'll meet this week and vote on the budget. More than anything, I just wanted to recognize all the work that we as a city have done with our strategic plan and our policies over the last few years on equity and inclusion. And, you know, the, the highlight right now is, is on the police department, but I, I think it's system-wide and city-wide as an organization that we've done a great job in, in moving in the right direction. And as far as the defund movement for police, I would just urge justice counselors to, you know, go off data-driven decisions and not, not emotional ones when it comes to that. I know we're voting on the budget later tonight, so I'll keep the rest of my comments on that till then.
Thank you, Adam. And then we'll end up with Jeff. Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, looks like Claudia needs to talk.
Jenny would like to speak.
Oh, Jenny, okay. I'm sorry, I said, I, I don't know if I'm seeing everyone, but you're, you're bright and clear right now. So Jenny?
All right, thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Claudia, for interrupting the proceedings. Firstly, I wanted to make a comment about Chief Scales. He started his topic with saying he apologized if, if we'd, we'd heard that before. And I'd just like to say that I had heard it before and I was happy to hear it again, and I will be happy to hear it again and again. And I'm sure that many people in our community feel the same way. And I also want everyone to know that I am very proud to be part of this city team, and I'm also really proud to be part of this community. I think that everyone has handled themselves very well in this extremely difficult time, all sorts of difficult things going on. And I really appreciate the consideration that everybody has been giving one another. And then I also want to add the good news that the library will be opening. We are planning a, you know, phased reopening, so starting next Tuesday, June 16th, we'll be open Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday for a couple of weeks, and then we'll keep increasing that time period. We look forward to having people back in the library to do library business. It will be limited service in terms of hoping to move people quickly through the library, or not quickly, but just keeping the traffic flow going. But it's such a treat to be able to serve the community in person again, and we're all looking forward to it. Thanks.
Thank you, Jenny. I see that there are a few other on the line. We've got 50 on the line right now. So Jeff, I'm, Chief Lippert is on, so Rich, if you'd like to address the, the group. You're muted if you're talking. And then Mike Bissett, I'll get, I'll have you get ready. You'll be next. Okay, Mike, why don't we go over to you?
Nothing this evening, Mayor, in the interest of your time and your remaining agenda.
Okay, thank you, Mike. And I'll call for Chief Lippert if he's on. Okay, I think Jeff, we're ready for you.
I think Chief Lippert is attending two meetings at the same time. He did indicate he didn't have anything specific to work on when I spoke with him earlier. Is, first of all, I just want to say how proud I am of all of the members of the executive team and the rest of the team here at the City of McMinnville. And I want to thank the council and the community for their support and encouragement for us to do well and to do better. A brief report tonight on just a couple of routine things. Just a reminder that the June 17th work session next week has been canceled. It should disappear from your calendars within the next 24 hours if it hasn't already. You also saw a note from Claudia earlier this week, attempting to schedule a special work session on June 30th. And for those of you who've responded, thank you. If you have not yet, looking forward to having your response to Claudia. And Jennifer will clarify this as we move into the public hearings. We're certainly interested in council discussion and guidance as appropriate. Tonight's not the night to adopt the budget, however, that's scheduled for your next council meeting.
Okay. Hearing that, then the last item in advice and informational items is our cash and investment report from November 2019. That is a part of our packet. And I see the chief is on, so Chief, if you'd like to have any words for the council?
Mr. Mayor and Council, just a short snapshot. We've been pushing really hard to get the consolidation study completed so that the consultants can be here for June 30th, July 1st, and July 2nd. They'll be here for two and a half days of intensive work sessions with a variety of groups, including council. And they'll take your questions, concerns at that point back and work it into the, the plan and be back to us by the August 1st with the final product. And the other thing that is out there still is, we had Loan Chief Hanifin to Dundee for what we thought was going to be a short period of time, and the investigation has turned out to be a little longer than we anticipated. So we'll be, we'll, we have worked with the city manager, and we're going to leave her in pocket through the initial consolidation study, and then we'll provide the city council of Dundee some options at that point, either for assistance to get an interim chief or to contract with us for some, something different than what we're doing right now.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate all that you're doing. Okay, that will take us to the scheduled public hearing this evening. And we are going to have a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget as approved by the Budget Committee. And so I will open the public hearing and ask our Finance Director, Jennifer, to, to present, and then the city manager may also make some comments. So we'll, we'll turn to Jennifer first, then Jeff, and then open for public testimony. Jennifer?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and councilors and members of the public. So this is a budget hearing. This is the opportunity for the mayor and city councilors to hear from the public. This is a statutory requirement in Oregon local budget law. And this happens after the meeting of the Budget Committee, which did take place on May 18th. They approved the budget, and the summary of the budget was published in the, the local newspaper. And that publishing happened on May 29th. And so now is the opportunity for public comment. And also, we had, because of COVID-19 and the public health emergency, we also utilized a web-based mechanism to take public testimony from folks. And we have, there were over 20 people who, who gave public testimony through the website. I know many more than that sent direct emails, and Claudia has pulled together all of that information for the public record. So that is also part of your public testimony. And so at this point, I'll just step back, and I think Claudia will be managing any folks who are here, either on the phone or in person, to make, make their, their testimony heard here tonight.
And Jennifer, just to clarify, as Jeff had mentioned, tonight, all we're doing is a public hearing, giving the community an opportunity to weigh in on the budget. And we'll just listen to them, and then we'll bring back the formalized approval of the budget by city council at a later date. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. And it will be the last Tuesday of June when the budget will be before you for appropriation, for your vote.
And if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, on my, on my notes tonight, again, we're not, as a council, having discussion. We'll wait that for the evening where we approve the budget, correct?
Correct, yes.
I just wanted to clarify that for the council so that you were aware. So again, tonight is an opportunity for the public to weigh in on public comments, which is a statutory, a statutory requirement of the state. So with that being said, I'm going to open up the public testimony and, and again, as Jennifer indicated, we have tremendous number of emails and information or testimony that was received through the website. And so those are all a part of the record with name and what they've shared with us. So I'll turn it over to Claudia for anyone that, on the line or in a city call that would like to testify.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Yeah, I just have a question related to the process, and this is really more for future benefit than for the current time. This is for Jennifer. Is there a specific timeline in statute for when public comment has to be taken? I'm, I'm wondering if we're allowed to take public comment, for example, prior to the Budget Committee meeting? And, and the reason for that is, I feel like the process might be better informed if we had the public commenting earlier rather than more towards the end going forward. And so I didn't know if that was something that the statute requires us to accept the comment only after the Budget Committee presents its report, or if, if there's more flexibility than that.
Well, so Walt may want to jump in, but there is a public comment portion at the Budget Committee meetings. So we did take public comment during that process as well. The budget hearing is particularly called out. Just the timing is, it needs to happen between the approval at the Budget Committee and prior to the ultimate adoption of the budget by the governing body. So in terms of gathering public comment ahead of meetings, that is allowed under statute. But during the public health emergency, the governor did issue an executive order mandating that opportunities for public comment be, be beefed up in this situation so that people wouldn't have to make a choice about coming physically to a meeting but could weigh in ahead of time. So we added the, the web form in response to what the governor asked us to do this cycle. But there's no reason why we wouldn't keep, keep doing it in future years. So does that go to your question?
Yeah, my, my question was about the, the timing of the, the testimony we're getting tonight, and you gave that to me. Thank you, Jennifer.
Sure.
Thank you, Sal. Thank you, Jennifer. And so we're now ready for public testimony, and so we'll turn it over to Claudia.
We'll start with Mark Davis.
Mark, welcome. It's good to see you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I think I'm going to take this off. You might be able to hear me a little better.
I think I'm going to take this off. You might be able to hear me a little better. Mark Davis, 652 Southeast Washington Street. I've already commented in detail at your Budget Committee hearing and submitted information in writing. I'm not going to go over all that. I'm going to restrict my comments to one issue at this point, which is your reserve policy. You know, with all that's going on in this country right now, I even debated about whether it was worth getting up here to say something. But, you know, at some point, the federal government's going to stop printing money. The state government's going to stop issuing executive orders, and the city of McMinnville is going to be left to figure out, how do we handle public safety? You know, how do we deal with the economic downturn that seems inevitable? And it seems to me that that's going to end up in the lap of the city in a lot of ways. And, you know, if we're going to be able to deal with those problems, I think we need money. And I'm just concerned that this budget is leaving us with an inadequate reserve. I was going to read in detail, but we have a lot of people here tonight. I think the last three years, I've been the only person speaking on the budget. I'm really happy to see that the public has showed up, and I hope some of them will come forward and speak to you also. But to give more time for other people, I'm not going to read all this, but I just want to remind the council that you approved a policy, a fund balance policy for the general fund back in 2011. And I'll read a couple of brief things. One, this policy establishes a fund balance goal for the general fund as an intended to serve as a guide for important budgetary decisions made by the city council, Budget Committee, and management. And it goes on to list some criteria. But the key point here is generally, 25% of general fund annual expenditures provides an adequate cash reserve to cover operating expenditures from July through October. Now, I don't know if 25% is correct. I've certainly heard 17%. I know we're operating at a different number with this budget, a much lower number. I appreciate the memo that the Finance Director provided in your packet regarding the calculation. I would hope in the future that we would see that calculation actually in the budget so citizens could see what our reserve total actually is. That memo shows that we have $2.6 million in reserves in the budget. $1.9 million in contingency, .6 million in money that's basically set aside for the volunteer firefighters, and $100,000 in actual cash that's going to be left if the contingency and the other money was used. The other $1.1 to $1.5 million that's shown there as part of the calculation is a projection about what might happen this year. And the actual, in my estimation, the actual reserve at this point in the budget, not with counting that extra million, million and a half, which is, in my mind, speculative, is actually 9%. So the budget that the Budget Committee recommended to you only has a reserve of 9%. You have a policy saying it should be 25%. You have Government Finance Officers Association recommendation of 17%, and you're significantly below that. The ending balance is going to depend on three things. One, the beginning fund balance. And that's going to obviously depend on the ending fund balance in the current fiscal year. With all the disruption that's going on, we don't know what's going on. Hopefully, we'll get some of that money that the federal government is printing, and that will help increase the size of that ending fund balance so that we can carry it over. But we don't know that that's going to happen. Then the second thing we can get is savings in the current budget, and that's what's been estimated to be $1 to $1.5 million. And the final thing that we'd have to do is not spend any of the contingency money. And it seems to me that in the current situation that we're in, that all these, having all three of these things work out in a positive way is highly unrealistic. And I'm fearful that we're going to wind up with even less money in our reserve than we started out with. I also have a problem with the council failing to identify what the $1 million to $1.5 million in cuts are. I mean, where are you going to take it from? Public safety? Are you going to take it from, you know, parks, the library? I mean, I think there ought to be a public discussion. This is, you're adopting a budget, and you're counting on that million, million and a half. We should be hearing where that money's coming from. And I should also mention that the reserve policy specifically mentions that one of the reasons we try to maintain a high reserve is so that we have a good bond rating. We have this MACPAC committee out there busy working, talking about, you know, ultimately coming up with some facility recommendations that's going to take a bond measure. If we have low reserves, I mean, they're not going to care about our projections. They're going to be looking at the actual numbers. And if we don't have actual numbers to show them that, you know, we have the reserves, I fear for our bond rating. The other thing to remember in this process is that our tax revenue depends on the tax base that the assessor gives us each year. We're estimating this year we're going to get a 4% increase. If we look at past history, the last recession, 2008, it took a couple of years before that number started dropping. And so we're setting ourselves, we're already at a low point, and we're setting ourselves up for the possibility that we might be looking at 2% or 1% increase in that tax base in a future year. So where are we going to get the money to cover our reserves? So in the end, I guess I would like to suggest that the council revisit that memo or the policy they established in 2011 and decide what the number is. I'm not saying that I know what the number is, but I'm asking you to tell the public what the number is. If it's not 25%, is it 17%? Whatever percent you're going to settle on, let's settle on the number, and then we can all look at the calculation and see whether the budget meets that number or not instead of having these philosophical arguments with the Budget Committee. And then the other thing I'd like to ask is I provided you the Government Finance Officers Association recommendation, and on the second page of that, in use and replenishment, it states, "The fund balance policy should define conditions warranting its use, and if a fund balance falls below the government's policy level, a solid plan to replenish it." And I think that's what we're really lacking here is, okay, you know, this is a crisis. It appears like it's time to dip into that balance, but what's the plan? I mean, what, you know, how are we going to get that money back? And I realize there's a lot of uncertainty, and you're going to deal with this in six months, but I think the time to start dealing with it is now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Next?
We'll have Caleb Holliplaw.
Caleb Holliplaw, a community member. I live over by the high school. I work at the hospital. I just want to say to the mayor and the council and the attendees that, first of all, I'm here to voice my unequivocal support for defunding, deconstructing, and transforming the McMinnville Police Department into an inter-agency, well-integrated, community policing model. And I don't think I'm alone in that. I do also want to push back slightly at perhaps the unintended implication that this movement towards this sort of transformation is not data or evidence-driven. I think notably, you've seen highlights in major publications of departments that have successfully done this or to an extent done this, and seen great results in their internal data. I also recognize that that movement and the push to do this is, a lot of it is outside of the purview of a budget discussion. Stuff like setting up public oversight committees for department affairs and incidents is not going to happen here. Stuff like the problematic arbitration clauses, which I think are in police union contracts, which I think is particularly poignant for our community, as we've seen arbitration clauses have an effect here in our department. That's outside of the purview of this discussion as well. But I do think, and I appreciate Chief Scales coming up and voicing a sentiment of commitment to doing better and being better. And I also sensed overtones of a desire for community policing and a different public safety model and some previous comments by council members. I appreciate that. And I just ask that the council and the department, in looking at approving this budget, consider what substantive measures can be seen in the proposed fiscal year 20 and 21 budget that would move towards that goal of transforming the department into a more robust community policing model. And I would ask that the police department-proposed budget be combed through line by line, and each item be considered and weighed as to whether or not it moves towards that goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Caleb.
Next, we have Kel Hughes.
Thank you, Claudia. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I'm Kel Hughes. I'm at 325 Southeast Baker Street. I emailed several of you, I think most of you, this afternoon. I've lived in McMinnville for the last two years. I moved to Oregon after I got out of the military, where I had spent a total of about 22 years in military service. The first half of it was in Marine Corps Reserve, and I also worked law enforcement for four years in eastern Oklahoma. I want to say that coming to McMinnville, I felt very welcome here. Chief Scales, the things that he has posted on Facebook and the words that he has shared mean a great deal to me because they reflect my values. They reflect everything that I believe, and they reflect everything that I think law enforcement stands for. It's incredible to have a leader like that in his position, and it's something that should never be overlooked. In the time that I was in the military, I stayed apolitical most of the time. You know, that's our job. We just, we keep our heads down and protect everybody. It doesn't matter. Since I've been out, I've seen some incredibly prideful things, and I've seen some very disturbing things. And I can't be silent anymore. A little over a week ago, I saw a video of a man struggling for breath and the look of apathy on a police officer. At that moment, he was no longer a police officer. He was a murderer, and a little part of my soul broke. And I couldn't be silent anymore. And I wanted to speak. I wanted to act. I wanted to do anything. I've seen the requests, the demands to defund the police. Those things are unfortunate. I think the law enforcement community has an incredible amount of responsibility and pressure put on them by people who see a very myopic perspective of what officers experience on a daily basis. I've been on both sides. I've looked over the sights of a 45 at a man pointing a shotgun at me. I know what it's like to wear a badge. I know what it's like to wear a uniform. And this is a time where we all have to have some perspective. We have to listen to each other. We have to listen. We have to understand. And it's not just about being right. It's about doing what's best to support our nation, to support each other, and to support Americans, not Republicans or Democrats, conservatives or liberals. We are Americans, and that's how we need to look at this. That's how we need to focus on this. I reached out to you this afternoon because I want to do something. I have to do something more than post ridiculously on Facebook and get into arguments with people and challenge their ideologies. I want to volunteer, to do anything possible, to serve the council, the police department, to volunteer for, as I spoke with Zach, about a public review board for the police department, about looking into other methods to approach situations. I used the analogy earlier that when there's a car accident, you have the police, the fire department, and EMTs that show up. Each one of those responding agencies has their own responsibility in that situation. When you have a domestic disturbance and somebody calls 911, usually you just get the police. There's no equivalent for an emotional fire or a mental health crisis. And there's something that needs to be said about that. I think it's unfair, the pressure that's placed on law enforcement. And it's unrealistic that they're equipped and capable of handling all of the situations that they face on an everyday basis in social crises. I know that we've got a long way to go, and people want solutions. They want immediate solutions. They want it fixed right now. And what I see in a lot of people is a whole lot of passion and a lot of emotion. And that is a ground that is ripe for planting knee-jerk reactions that get us into situations where we have unsustainable policies that intertwine and can't be undone. And now, more than any other time, it is absolutely important to stop and take a step back, take a deep breath, approach it as a group, and work towards realistic solutions and long-term solutions. And I volunteer for that. I'd be perfectly happy to be involved in something like that. But I think that's what we need to focus on, and I appreciate you giving me the time to speak and to say that part of it. And I look forward to continuing to be as active as I can be in the community and play a role in helping us all move forward together, because that's where we're best, and that's where we're strongest. And I hope that we stay that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Kel, and thank you for your thoughtful email to the council.
Next, we have Mallory Stiff on Zoom. We'll unmute your mic.
You're muted, Claudia.
Sorry about that. Next, we have Mallory Stiff, who's on Zoom, so we'll unmute her mic.
Okay, it's unmuted. Mallory, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for hearing me, and thank you for holding this meeting. I have a few, a couple different questions slash comments for you all tonight. So I'm just wondering, since the city of McMinnville has a vision of a, quote, "a collaborative and caring city inspiring an exceptional quality of life", I'm wondering if we can advocate for redistribution of police funding to create new departments that would support community health through mediation and mental health supports. For example, we could have community peace coaches that are ingrained in the communities to lead and educate citizens on de-escalation techniques, conflict management, and effective communication. And if you can't tell, I'm a social worker in the community. My second comment is, if we do continue to fund police in any capacity, as a mental health provider, I've noticed that police are frequently impacted by trauma and by stress to a high degree. And I'm wondering why there has not been a policy created to include required mental health supports embedded within the police department in order to ensure the mental health of those who are carrying weapons in public on a daily basis? And I'm saying, like, as a requirement for police officers to see a mental health provider on a regular basis in order to maintain their mental health and a capacity to actually serve our community in a positive manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mallory, for your comments.
Next, we have Rachel Karstensen.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Are we able to direct questions to staff at this time during this? I know you're talking to people.
Yeah, we're just taking public testimony, Zach, if I'm not mistaken. Walt, you can weigh in on this, but this is taking public testimony, and so we can take notes and have a discussion later, or we could reach out to staff through Jeff, because we've got people's names and how to get ahold of them. Am I right, Walt?
I think if you're taking public testimony, that's what you do. At the point you've closed the public testimony, the council can deliberate, ask questions of staff. I know that that's not programmed for tonight, but certainly the council could choose to do that tonight or some of that tonight if they wish, or do it as programmed at the next meeting.
Thank you. Claudia?
Hi.
Who do we have?
My name is Rachel Karstensen.
Rachel, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for hearing me. So I recently heard a metaphor that really resonated with me. So I recently heard a metaphor that really resonated with me. It spoke about our community leaders as tools within a toolbox. Right now, I feel that our police department is considered the entire toolbox when we could think of each community leader and each area of our community as being useful. To quote Alicia Garza, activist, author, and co-founder of the Black Lives Matter movement, "We are asking police to be domestic violence counselors. We're asking police to be therapists. We're asking police to deal with people who are in crisis in terms of their mental health. And police are not trained to do that." And in fact, sure, we could spend a bunch of time training people with badges and guns to be able to respond differently to that. And maybe we should. But we also have people whose actual profession it is to do that work. And so if you actually limit what police do in our communities and how often they come into contact with our people and for what, that is actually the key to saving more lives. As long as you also invest on the other side in making sure that there is a robust set of resources that people can access that they won't be criminalized for accessing, but also where you don't have the option for a mistake of trying to deal with a mental health crisis and you shoot someone. I see in your proposed budget that there is a decrease in the police funding by .38%. While this is better than an increase, this is not enough. Over the last three years, the McMinnville PD has seen an increase of over 1.5 million in their allocated budget. The current proposed budget, 9.3 million, is more than our Parks and Rec, library, finance, planning, and municipal court budgets combined. I believe this is disproportionate to our city's needs. I urge you to please divest from our police and invest in our community in ways that truly serve and protect us. And also, I would like to speak to what Mallory was saying earlier and second her great idea about peace coaches and also funding into social workers like herself. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel.
Next, we have Christopher Anderson on Zoom, so we will unmute his mic.
Christopher, welcome.
Hello. Thank you for having me. I spoke earlier and I'd like to have that. I live here in McMinnville, AK80 South West Fellows. I like, what I said earlier, we also entered in follow-up on this. And I would like to second what both Mallory and Rachel said earlier in regards to putting so eloquently how looking over the budget is, it's quite upsetting to see that we are spending 9.3 million dollars on our police force and that's 29% of our budget. In comparison, I cannot see, and I'm missing it maybe because I don't know budget reports or how to read them correctly, but I don't see any funding or where the funding is except for housing, which is $300,000 for affordable housing projects? I mean, if this is how our budgeting is treating, it's disproportionately affecting a lot of people if we're putting $9 million and only giving $300,000 to housing projects. I mean, I'm probably not reading it correctly. But I would like to put this out for a challenge and to our chief of police to forego 1.5 million of his budget to put that towards funding what Mallory and Rachel have both suggested in that we start task force and start community health and mental health support teams in order to act as a first line of responders, much like our EMTs do. And again, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher.
Next, we have Vanessa via Zoom, and we will unmute her mic.
Thank you. Vanessa, welcome.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to say thank you to the city council members, for everyone in attendance, as well as everyone, virtually, physically, everyone protesting, as well as our police force. I had a few key comments that I wanted to make, and we'll keep this to under three minutes, for sure. And first of all, I am a homeowner and a business owner here in McMinnville, just to provide some context. So first of all, I just wanted to reiterate a point that I think is becoming more and more clear, but I think is worth reiterating, that the word "defund" is sometimes questionable. "Defund" doesn't mean remove all funding. "Defund from the police" does simplistically mean redistributing funds to other endeavors as well. So I think that's just something very clear that we need to be sharing broadly and widely, so people don't feel that it means taking away all police funding and rights whatsoever. Second of all, and to mimic much of what Mallory, Rachel, and Christopher have already said, that with an annual budget of $31 million to allocate 9 million towards the police, a third of our budget, even in someone not in the police force, is pretty astronomical and pretty jarring, especially considering that's more than even the fire department is allocated. I did want to provide just some data in a different way. I'm not kind of a data geek. I did some quick math, and that kind of funding towards the police averages in a population of about 33,000 people that McMinnville has, that averages about $272 per resident, per citizen of this county or this town allocated towards the police, so $272. You know, meanwhile, we have County Commissioner Mary Sterrett, who is, has publicly bemoaned funding diversity and equity inclusion training to the tune of less than $20,000 of our city's budget. Just seems like a huge inequity. Again, $272 towards the police versus an average of 58 cents per person for DEI training. I just wanted to highlight that, the gross difference there. And then, thirdly, I just wanted to kind of speak to, nobody here wants our city to be unsafe. Nobody here wants our city to be overrun by anyone defying the law. But if we're not willing to invest in preventative and proactive measures to prevent some of these things from happening, then our city as a whole and our budget is going to be extremely sacrificed. You know, looking at the amount of money that's brought in, not only by tourism, I think $1.2 million in transient tax, the tourism that comes to our town, but secondarily, all of the budget and the funding and the revenue that comes to our local businesses and our community, we can't afford a PR crisis such as what's happened in Minneapolis. And that's not to say that's the only reason. But if we can do these proactive measures and preventative measures in a way that's extremely less costly than the long-reaching and never-ending impact of those types of actions, then we're doing a disservice to our town, a town that I know has values that are committed towards community and life and happiness and all of those beautiful things. So I just wanted to highlight, again, the tangible and intangible costs that come with not diverting funds towards things that prevent these horrible things from even happening. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Vanessa.
Next, we have Boone McQuaid Chris.
I stand by three minutes.
Hello. My name is Boone. I am a community member here in McMinnville. I live on Cowell Street. And very simply, would like to just add my voice and reinforce the statements of many members of the community who have already spoken very eloquently, and I think very meaningfully, towards a very strong and deeply felt reflection in the community on the idea that nearly a third of the general fund budget is proposed to go to the police department. I think that there is a very strong sense in the community that that inaccurately reflects how many people in the town feel about where the safety in their community comes from and how they reflect on it. I don't necessarily think that the opinion of many people who live in this town would be that that is how they would like money to be invested in their safety and in their community. I say that very anecdotally and very personally. But again, I'm mostly speaking to reinforce and revoice many things already said, I think very eloquently, by Rachel, Mallory, Christopher, and Caleb. I thank you for your time and would, again, simply like to say that in accordance with the comments made by Police Chief Scales, the most meaningful action the police department could take towards his comments would be to cede those funds back to the community to be redistributed in more creative ways. Thank you very much.
And next, we have Tynan Pierce, who's on Zoom. We'll unmute your mic.
Hello there. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you for holding the meeting and thank you for taking time for public comment. So like many of the people that have already spoken, I also would like to urge the budget to be reconsidered, specifically to defund the police. I would ask that people view this in very much the same way that people view the divest campaign for climate change. Don't get hung up on the word "defund". Of course, there are people calling for abolishment, and that is a step that is sometimes relevant in certain communities. In this community, there seems to be a large number of people that are committed to real work. It sounds like the chief is committed to real work, and that's really wonderful. But true commitment oftentimes lies in the dollar. And if we continue to invest in more and more trainings for police as opposed to equipping other community organizations with useful funds, we're just going to continue going down this same slope that so many communities before us have gone down. So I would really urge and ask that people be very creative, look into the budget, and find out why we need to have so much of that. And I know that there's other things that the city's spending money on. One of the figures that was brought to my attention, like many people, crash-courching on trying to figure out how to read a budget, is how much of our property taxes go straight into the general fund. And so that means that much of the money that we as property, I own a home here with my wife in McMinnville, that we're paying is going directly into this general fund. And so it is an incredibly important part for us to voice our opinion on. And I encourage all of the council people and all the people in city official positions to welcome this and to encourage people to get more involved and to ask for more comment and for people to really participate more in civic engagement. Because what we're hearing is that a lot of people are very confused as to why so much of the general fund is allocated towards police. There are many other creative ways, there are many other great organizations in town that are already operating that could use those funds, as well as one of the other gentlemen brought up, the potential for sustainable housing, or affordable housing, rather, that was in the budget, was that $300,000. But that was only if we had a positive balance at mid-year. And so again, that just seems like an absurdly off number. That we have 9.3 million for police, but we have maybe just $300,000 if we have a positive balance. Again, I could be misreading the budget, but I would echo that sentiment. Involved in this, I would also please, please, please take into account that I don't see much in this budget for climate action and addressing one of the pending catastrophes of our time and how this is incredibly linked to social justice. And that if we don't provide a safe and healthy community in all holistic ways, we are going to be ending up in a very bad situation. So yes, right now, defunding the police and using those forces towards community resources to help our Black Indigenous People of Color communities is incredibly essential. And then also, to tie that into a direct take on climate action, is essential. So I thank you for your time. I thank you for hearing the comments. And that's it.
Thank you, Tynan.
Mayor, that's everyone that had signed up for public testimony.
Thank you, Claudia. With that being announced, I will now close a public testimony on the budget. And our next area is going to be the proposed uses of state revenue sharing for fiscal year 2020, 2021. And we'll go through that public hearing. And then.
I'm sorry. I just want to interject because we have a lot of people in the audience and in the room. And every time we have one of these things and we don't acknowledge that people have been heard and listened to and understood, people feel that way. They feel like they haven't been heard and understood. So I just want to acknowledge that the members on our council hear the people in the audience. We understand what you're saying. And it's the policy of our council to really not comment on public comments. And that's the reason why people are not commenting from this side of the dais. It's not necessarily that we don't agree or that we're not listening. It's just that that's not the norm for us. So I just wanted to explain that for the folks in the room. Sorry for interrupting you, Mayor.
Thank you, Sal. And so again, we'll go through the state revenue sharing piece. And then we'll go through that public hearing because we may have people in the audience. And then I'll come to the council and see if we want to have a little discussion or hold that off for our budget deliberations at a later date. So I am going to open the public, well, I'm going to read a statement first. And the state revenue sharing law, ORS 221.770, requires a city to annually pass an ordinance or resolution requesting state revenue sharing money. In order to receive state revenue sharing in 2020, 2021, a city must have levied property taxes in the preceding year and hold a public hearing before the budget committee and for possible uses of the funds and hold a hearing before the city council on the proposed uses of the funds in relationship to the entire budget. We've had that public hearing before the budget committee when we met as a budget committee. But now we're going to open for a public hearing on the proposed uses of state shared revenue. And so I'll turn to Jennifer to present what we're going to be doing. And then we'll open the, well, I'll open the public hearing right now and then ask Jennifer just to present.
Yes, good evening again. So thank you, Mayor, for laying out all of the statutory requirements here and why we're having this hearing. So in terms of what's being proposed here, this is unchanged from the document that the budget committee received earlier in May and gives essentially examples of the kinds of things that our state shared funding would be utilized for. So it, there are items throughout the organization that are on this list. So that's.
And then, Jennifer, I would ask you to remind the council the dollar amount that we're looking at through the shared revenue with the state.
The total amount that we're estimating for next year is $563,000.
Okay.
So at this point, I guess it's open for public testimony.
So we'll open up the public hearing. And again, any public testimony specifically on the use of state revenue sharing, which, as Jennifer indicated, was $563,000. So I'll turn it over to Claudia.
Mayor, we have not had anyone sign up or request to speak so far.
Okay. Then I will go ahead and close a public hearing on the state revenue sharing for fiscal year 2020, 2021. It is now almost nine o'clock. We have a couple of other items to discuss. But I would like to just open it up to the council is if they are wanting. like to just open it up to the council, is if they are wanting to share some thoughts or dialogue this evening, or if we want to reserve that when we come back to deliberate and approve the budget. So I'll just kind of open it up and see what your thoughts might be.
I guess I'll go first, since nobody else is jumping in. I think that we should have a little bit of a conversation tonight in light of the large amount of folks who came to testify, at the very least to hash out the ideas, and if there's any change in direction that the council suggests, that that would give staff the time to do that ahead of the next budget meeting. So I think we should talk at least.
And we're open for that. So again, you know, we've received a lot of testimony via email, and most of that has come to the council, and many of us have spent at least a good hour forwarding all of that off to Claudia so that she could make that a part of the record. I know I started last night, and there was a lot of forwarding going on. So again, there's a lot of testimony, whether it be written or eloquently shared with us in the public hearing. So any comments?
The first comment that I would have is not related to the Black Lives Matter movement, but to pretty much everything Mark Davis had to say. I found myself, of course, I was the voice probably in the budget committee that was pushing on that as well, but I think that we should be concerned about the long-term economic ramifications of this COVID-19, and I am concerned that we did not do enough in the budget to strip out non-discretionary spending items, even though I know that probably those will get dealt with later on. And I am concerned that we're going to have more severe cuts later on by not taking a more cautious approach upfront. With respect to the Black Lives Matter comments and the questions about defunding the police, I think a lot of people in the public, you know, probably don't realize that the process for developing the budget happens primarily by our staff, that it's a pretty lengthy process that takes several months and involves, of course, hundreds and hundreds of household lives, people who are earning an income. And so while I think it is important to have a conversation about ways that we can reform the police, first with things that are maybe in line with what the chief already is doing, and second, maybe starting a conversation so that we could look to different models for policing. And before the, at the last budget committee meeting and during some of the conversations that we've had about the fire and public safety, I've been in favor of a levy to fund additional staffing positions, and my thought with the levy was that we could use that to potentially hire, you know, social workers to be working with the police and doing crisis calls. I know that Officer Height and our mental health officers are already doing some of that with the county, but expanding that kind of service on a going-forward basis does make some sense to me. And a lot of the comments around trying to do more to fund community services, I also find myself sympathetic to. So I don't think it's something that we should be trying to do on a last-minute or short-term basis, but I do think that we should start the conversation that people have asked us to engage in and, you know, be proactive in addressing the concerns that were raised tonight.
Thank you, Sal. Any other comments? I'm not going to belabor it, but.
Just briefly, in regard to Mark's comments, I must admit that honestly, there was a few things that really rang a bell with me, and one of them is, we've been kind of up in the air about 25%, 17%, whatever. It would be good to memorialize what we think is the proper reserve that we should have, and then take some constructive steps as to discussing how we might get back to that at some point, you know, and what's a reasonable time. I just feel like those are proactive steps that the council could take that would be appropriate for policy.
I'll say a few things as well. One, you know, one of the concerns we have regarding our budget shortfall right now is, of course, we don't really know what our budget shortfalls are going to be, the demands that are coming in, the idea that we'll be receiving state or federal money when those budgets are really highly uncertain. It'll be really interesting when quarterly taxes are, this quarter, quarterly taxes are coming in, and of course, there just will be a huge shortfall there, and of course, a trickle-down effect. So we have, in a way, the most complicated budget we've ever encountered, or I've encountered. I will say, I do also hear the public outcry to go, somebody said, "Go through the police budget with a fine-tooth comb." And I mean, I think that that is part of the process that we do go through, is going through the entire budget with a fine-tooth comb, but also in light of the recent public request for that, that is, I mean, I will certainly be doing that, going back through the budget for another evaluation. I do want to say that we do have to have plans present and ready and that are actionable for how we deal with community concerns. So for instance, we need to have. I'm going to save the rest of my comments for our next meeting when we're deliberating, but the idea of massive transitions right now without plans in place to address real community concerns that could leave our community vulnerable is at the top of my mind. And I will add my voice again to what Mark and what Kelly said, we've, our reserve has been steadily declining. There's some things with that that are really, at this point, beyond our control to a degree, and those raise some huge questions for us going forward. We do need to be thinking about this budget in terms of the recession, in terms of being in a recession, and it's a, no, somebody disagrees? Somebody said, mm-mm?
No, that was just feedback.
Oh, okay, because who doesn't think we're going into a recession?
Those are fighting words, Remy.
Anyway, it's all.
Not the R-word, dude. So Remy, was that the end of your comments?
I have more to say, but I think there'll be more, some of the things that are more specific, I would like to do what the community has asked, which is to go back through the budget again with this new lens of COVID implications, which we've really only had that, we've only had a review of the budget once with COVID considerations. And, you know, I felt as though our city manager addressed that pretty thoroughly in his last budget presentation about the adaptability of our budget and that, you know, it's not that it was unaddressed, but I think in light of not just COVID, but in light of all of the other things that have unfolded over the past number of weeks and the questions that are being asked by the community, that it deserves, the, the community deserves us as the body that would approve this budget, to go back through once again and really take a close look, and so I'll be doing that. And then I'll save the rest of my comments for when we deliberate.
Thank you, Remy. Wendy?
So I agree with a lot of what the other councillors have said so far. I think that, I do hear the citizens that they want us to, as Remy was saying, they want us to take a closer look at the budget before we move forward with it. I think that's a totally reasonable request, and I think that it's, that I will also be doing the same before our deliberations. I do think that the scope of change that they're talking about is something that would not happen, we can look at evaluating what opportunities we have, and we can start moving in that direction, but it's definitely not a pivot, it's a quick pivot, it's something that would take time to evaluate and then make plans and then shift from one thing to another and evaluate where are the resources, how are those needs to be covered? So there's a lot, it's a process change that is a systemic change that takes time. So it would be, it would not be something I'd be comfortable with just stripping money out of the budget for this budget, talking about this budget, it's not a quick change. That being said, I also have some concerns about what Mark brought up, and I would like more clarity around, okay, what is our target? And maybe, I don't know if it's appropriate for Jennifer to give us some background on any additional information she has about what she's seeing financially with regards to COVID since the last time we had our meeting and she presented on that, and then also maybe her response to Mark's specific testimony and his submitted testimony? Would it be appropriate for her to give us some of her thoughts now so that we can consider it as we're reviewing the budget again before our next deliberation?
That, or have her just maybe look into our concerns and get it out to us in a written fashion.
She supposedly did do some form of a response, and I myself have not found it yet, so I'm just kind of waiting.
I think you're right, we had it in there, it was one sheet. I feel like it wasn't quite as comprehensive as I would like to see.
I would tend to agree.
Yeah, I'm hearing that we have a resolution that puts us at a reserve of 25%, and we've been off of that, and, you know, we've always talked about getting back to it, but if that is not the number, what is the number? And so let's be realistic about what we're headed towards, and then if we go through COVID and have a downturn, then we know what to work back towards, and that higher number that may not be realistic today. It might be 17, it might be 15, I don't know what that number is, but it does warrant us to have a better discussion and not go with a resolution that has us at 25%, because if we were to do a scorecard on that, we would have failed.
And also, the comment that Mark made about having a plan when you go below that amount for how you're going to get back there, I think that that's a really good point, and if we don't have that threshold number, then we're just saying, okay, we're going to try to get it back up, right? But that's not a plan, and that's just kind of hoping, right, that we can at some point in the future have an idea of how to do that. So I think that we, having that structure in place is a great idea, and so I'd like to see some information about that or some work on that, and maybe some information from Jennifer about her thoughts on that.
Great. Any other comments from council? Zach?
Yeah. So I guess a couple of thoughts, and I'm trying to write them down so I could stay on point. A couple of things, maybe in a no-pretending order, but the comments about a only $300,000 for affordable housing and at that, on the chopping block already if we have money, I just want to tip my hat to the, I mean, I've only been here for less than two years in council that we've been able to get to that point. I know it's measly, I know everyone in council would love that to be quadrupled and quadrupled at the end of that, and a lot of these programs, I think some of my frustration in sitting here was, let's do them all! And you guys have all done a lot of hard work to get $2 in those buckets, and so my hat's off to you, and I don't think those are small potatoes, they may look like it when you immediately put it, put your eyes on it for the first time. So I appreciate everyone else's work in getting to those points, and I will work to defend that and hopefully grow that, so I just wanted to address that. It also dovetails with, you know, a year of budget has been around forever, and we're just moving one year at a time further down the road, and so we're here inheriting something that has been around for a long time, and I hope we can make some meaningful changes, I hope we can address some community concerns, and I hope we can continue to evolve that discussion, and I hope that everyone today who is in the council chambers, who has, had sent comments, who didn't send comments but carries that passion in their heart and, you know, is young in age now and ready to get involved for a long time, will continue to show up, because it's going to take that long-term commitment and those long-term dedicated people to continue the work that you guys have already done to get to $300,000, and hopefully someday it'll be a lot more. So I encourage those who participated now to continue the discussion, as some people indicated, for the long term, it's been some real hard work. Some specific things I'd like to see related to the budget, the state revenue sharing of $563,000, there seems to be, maybe, that list looks a lot different, given everything we just heard, and potentially we could relook at some of those dollars and immediately put those towards programs or getting programs rolling that would address things that we heard, and I'd like to have that discussion, maybe, would have loved to hear more public testimony on that, but maybe there's a budget for, I heard the term, we all went on a crash course on how to read and understand the budgets, and I'm sure that state assessment share, revenue sharing got to the bottom, and maybe there was a little bit more of excitement that could have built around that, but perhaps we can reassess some of those dollars and immediately push those towards getting some programs going. Whether it's part of this budget discussion, which it's not, but stemming from this budget discussion, I would like to establish or discuss how we, what it looks like, but establish a citizen committee, whether it's an advisory committee or an oversight committee, that really in charge, develop and charge them with the mission of running with a lot of these programs and instituting and monthly, or however long, on a sustainable, long-term discussion, manage and implement and discuss these. I think I've heard a lot of comments, and I know they're well-intentioned, but there's some specifics that, you know, miss the mark, we aren't in charge of the school district's budget, I wish we were, it happens in our city, we aren't in charge of their budget. I would encourage.
Not in charge of.
Right, and a lot of those things that are in our city, aren't in our budget, aren't in our purview, aren't in our policy, I would love to have them happen, and so I think there's a education component that we could do to get our allies who are fired up about it and encourage them to be proactive and point them in the right direction, and then bring them in and help them look at our police department, our policing methods, our mental health approaches, all these things, see what we're already doing, see what other community partners are already doing, and see if there are ways to bring those together. There may be immediate, long, immediate things we could implement and that have effective change, and then there's going to be really long-term, ongoing monitoring that we need to do. So I'd like to work towards establishing that committee or oversight committee or group or whatever we're going to call it sooner rather than later. Additionally, I'd like to construct a plan to both deliberate and assess what our reserve percentage is and should be, and publish a strategy to get to, you know, 18% or wherever we decide that. So two discussions, one is what should that published policy be, which is currently 25%, we're kind of all, oh, you know, up with what it is, and then come up with a published plan prior to the adoption of this budget on how we're going to get to, you know, whatever we decide, 15, 17, 18%. 18 is my vote. And then I'd like, I think there was some discussion, I think I'm also in that camp of, may have lost that published memo, but I'd like to second, third, or fifth Mark Davis's lists of questions and like kind of a published response to those. I see there's one document in here that's a published response to some questions that was helpful, but, you know, I'd like to see more published responses, essentially asking all of Mark Davis's questions to staff. I'd like to also encourage the chief to reflect and return to our next meeting with some additional measures or some additional thoughts and ideas that his department can start implementing or sort of thinking about in ways which they could respond to citizens' comments without sort of knee-jerk reaction or immediate decisions that have skewed long-term effects, but bring together a list of those. And then I guess in conjunction with the citizen committee. And then I guess in conjunction with the citizen committee, identify and engage in an assessment of larger jurisdictional partners already offering some services and how we could either work with them or help bring them in to the fold. And then I also wanted to ask the chief, if we did, does the police department have a requirement for officers to undergo routine impact and trauma and stress trainings independent of incidences, just sort of ongoing trainings and address those items? So that's my list.
Go ahead, chief, if you're there.
Okay, sorry, Zach, I didn't completely hear your question. It was about training.
Well, I think Mallory Stiff, Miss Stiff asked if the police has, and this is in my notes, but a police has a policy in trauma and stress, sort of training or counseling sessions, I guess, after a specific incident, just in general.
Oh, great, great question. With respect to post-incident debrief, say we have a traumatic incident, our staff have the ability to speak with somebody through not only the peer support program that we've started up this last year, they've also got the ability to talk with somebody through the EAP program, Employee Assistance Program. But I think more importantly, I think it was Mallory discussed, or the thought of the need for wellness checks, so to speak, making sure that our staff is okay mentally and that we're doing right by them. You'll notice in my budget that I submitted and requested and we're there right now, we're sort of at the, almost to the finish line. I did put some money aside and I modeled it after the Oregon City Police Department, thank you Claudia, who has, who have an annual wellness program, an annual wellness check, where they're going to go and they're going to be seen by, this is voluntary though, it's not mandatory, where the officers and all the staff for that matter have the ability to go in, speak to somebody that's a clinician in law enforcement, in that profession specifically, and see how they're doing, basically do a checkup. And then if they choose or they need to, it's apparent, it would be incumbent upon them to go back and visit with them. And this person is a clinician that has a tremendous amount of respect within the profession that does things for Oregon City PD and candidly other law enforcement agencies in the area. But I do want to touch on that. Can I answer your question?
Yeah. You have a, and maybe not, shouldn't share it or what, but I don't know if you have access to that, if it's under some sort of, you know, anonymity, but do you have a sense of the percentage of officers that take advantage of that program?
Well, that program would start this fiscal year, so it would be brand new.
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
We've got a question from Kelly and then Remy.
And then Adam.
I'm sitting here listening to this and I'm thinking, really the only thing that really hit me tonight that really needs addressing as far as this budget is concerned is possibly some of Mark's questions and the two that I thought were important, I told you already. Everything else is kind of like squirrel. I mean, we don't need to be discussing this at this point in time. I mean, the budget is not going to change that much and obviously the police are proactively dealing with it. I think it would be lovely to have all of these programs, but to do everything that's strenuous, to do everything that's been extremely discussed, we don't have capacity for. You have to get realistic about what we have capacity for. And you know, there are other entities like the county and the school district that, you know, they need to weigh in and do what their part is. So I just, I kind of want to bring up the fact that to do a complete citizens committee and everything like that is just kind of like overkill in this particular situation. I'm sorry, I'm not unsympathetic. I do believe Black Lives Matter. I don't feel that we have a serious problem in this town, not one that affects a major change in the budget as currently planned. My two cents.
Thank you, Kelly. Remy and then Adam.
I was wondering if you could address, you said that the mental health check-ins right now, it's a voluntary option for the police department and can you talk to us a little bit about why that's voluntary instead of mandated? Thank you.
Candidly, I, this would be something that we're going to need to get negotiations or approval with the McMinnville Police Association, the union. And I've not heard, and I've checked around throughout the state, any agency that's mandating, there's nothing legally that's requiring it. We are doing it out of an abundance of caution and to invest in our employees. That was the thought behind that and to ensure that those that have or need the ability and desire the ability, not everybody is going to want to talk to somebody. That's just, that's just the truth. But providing them with that option is, I think, incredibly valuable, not only from an employee standpoint, but also a community standpoint if we're able to help those that need a little bit of assistance, so.
And will you educate us a little bit more on the process? If an officer wants to engage in a mental health check-in, what's the process that officer undergoes? Do they have to contact somebody else within the PD or the union or how do they initiate that process?
Yeah, that's a great question, Remy. And they would initiate it themselves. We provide them with a list of provider, again, somebody that's a clinician within the profession that deals with these, with officers all the time. And it would be simply them going to talk to this person in an annual basis and then coming back. There's no disclosure to us whatsoever. The only disclosure there would be if there's any potential issues where there's some sort of, you know, a crime has been committed or something like that. That's what's going to trigger that counselor, the therapist to provide information back to the PD.
One more follow-up on that. So you said annual check-in, so in your budget request, that's for a one-time check-in or for as much mental health as might be required outside of what's provided through the health insurance?
Yeah, that's a one-time city benefit that I proposed and that you would see. And then the other follow-ups would be if they choose to be, would be through their own insurance at the city.
And can you talk to us a little bit about mental health services and health insurance as it stands in the PD currently, please?
Well, the insurance is covered or provided through the Teamsters organization. It's I think a Blue Cross policy, but I don't know anything other than that. And I'm sorry, what was your other question?
I was just wondering about regular access to health and mental health, which I see as being one and the same, through the current insurance policies.
I believe they've got insurance that's similar to mine, so I believe that they've got the ability to seek out know-how professionals or any sort of medical treatment, obviously with a deductible, but I couldn't tell you specifically what their deductibles are, but I do know that that is one of their insurance coverages, a part of.
Good. Not to labor, I know Adam's not had a chance to weigh in and ask questions or give some thoughts. And so Adam, I'll do that and then in lieu of, we've got much more to go over, we've still got to meet as a urban renewal body this evening. So Adam, if you'd go.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I would second the other councilors that would like some answers and feedback on Mark's questions, but specifically before we get to our next budget cycle, I would definitely like to drill down a number that we as a council can agree to and strive for and not just have it be this number from 2011. I think it should be current and it should be a number that we hold ourselves to and if we need to make those hard cuts, then we make those hard cuts to be at that number for our bond rate and for our constituents. As far as the, all the testimony we took tonight and changing some things around the PD, I'm definitely open to the conversation throughout this next budget year, but I would definitely be opposed to any knee-jerk reactions to try and get something done in the next couple of weeks. Doesn't mean I'm not sympathetic to what their message is, it's just I don't think that the amount of time and effort that's gone into this budget, I think it would create more uncertainty and more, it'd make that department more unstable than moving forward with what we know and bringing professionals in from all those different sectors and what their cost would be and not just blindly stripping money out of a budget to fund a different program when we don't even know what the cost is and what the effectiveness is of it at this point in time. And if it's even, you know, right-sized for our city, I mean, some programs should be ran by county or should be ran by state and we're still a city of 35,000 people, so we shouldn't be trying to run the programs of metro areas of over 100,000 people because we don't have the funds to do it.
Yeah, without the community block grants and those types of things.
Yeah, exactly, Mayor.
Again, I think we've had a good discussion this evening and like I say, I think what we do now is do some thoughts and if you want to look into the budget, do so, but our next discussion will be as we get around our budget discussion at the council meeting coming up. So if I may, I'd like to move on with our agenda as outlined. Number six on our agenda this evening is a consent agenda, considering a request from Michael Booker Estate Incorporated. Is there anyone that would like to have any items taken off of the consent agenda this evening? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
It's been moved by Kelly and seconded by, was that Remy? Or Wendy? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Tonight's consent agenda passes unanimously six to zero. This takes us to our first resolution this evening. It is Resolution Number 2020-33, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Cummins Incorporated for the purchase of an emergency standby generator for the water reclamation facility and raw sewage pump station through Sourcewell Interstate Cooperative Buying Program. And so Mike, we'll call on you to present.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'll refer you to the brief staff report. The engineering services manager, Larry Sherwood, is placed in your packet as well as the proposed resolution and several additional attachments related to this item. Specifically, the city has been working with McMinnville Water and Light for some time now related to power feeds to the water reclamation facility and the raw sewage pump station, which is located at the old sewer treatment plant adjacent to the dog park. Both of those facilities are currently fed by two separate feeds by McMinnville Water and Light, but they have had concern that in the event of a widespread regional power outage, we would not have redundant power for either of those facilities. And so what you have in your packet this evening is a proposal to purchase two 1,000-kilowatt diesel generators, one for each facility, that will provide emergency power in the case of an outage. Certainly when both of these facilities were constructed in the 90s, the cost of emergency generators was much higher and the technology has improved and the price has come down. So this purchase will be made through Sourcewell, which is an interstate cooperative purchasing program that the city has used in the past. We went through a review process and evaluated the three manufacturers that are involved in the Sourcewell purchasing program, Caterpillar, Kohler and Cummins. At the end of the review, Cummins was rated the highest manufacturer and additionally they were the least-cost manufacturer. So the staff is proposing that council approve the resolution, purchasing two generators from Cummins in the amount of $460,902. At a later date, you will see a separate contract for the installation of these generators at the facilities. And unless there are any questions, staff would recommend you adopt the resolution as presented.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions of Mike?
I assume that cost is just for the generators, it doesn't include the installation?
That's correct. The fiscal year '21 budget includes $1.1 million for this project. The additional cost above the generators will be the installation and testing of the equipment. That'll be a separate contract at a later date.
Mike?
Mike, the question that I might have, and I'm sure you guys have researched it thoroughly, but I didn't see it in the report. From time to time, I know that there can be some grant money for generators for backup purposes. Have we looked into any of the federal statewide programs that might assist in the purchase of backup generators?
Not as part of this particular project.
Do you know, do you have a sense that there might be programs out there that could offset some of those costs? I know Mack Water and Light, if I'm not mistaken, maybe participated in some type of a grant program to pick up a generator because so much of that is equated to emergency management and there can sometimes are dollars available. I just throw that out. I don't know the answer and I don't know if it's even pertinent, but if they're available, sometimes it might be wise to take a look and see if there's some dollars out there.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Certainly McMinnville Water and Light's team has been at the table as we've been working on this project. You'll recall that the airport procured an emergency generator through the state's emergency management program, where the state actually owns the generator and we get to use it, but they get to recall it at any time if they need it. That certainly wouldn't be a model that would work for generators of this size. These will be permanent installations at both facilities.
Well, I knew you'd be more on top of that. These are large generators and so I just brought the question up because I didn't know what the answer to that might be. Any other questions of Mike? I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2020-33. So moved. And a second.
Second.
It's been moved by Sal, seconded by Wendy. All in favor of Resolution 2020-33, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Signify by saying nay. Resolution 2020-33 passes unanimously six to zero. That takes us to consideration of Resolution 2020-34, a resolution authorizing an inter-fund loan from the wastewater capital fund to the general fund and the airport fund. And so Jennifer, I'll call on you to present.
Okay, yes, thanks, Mayor. So this, what you have before you is a resolution that would authorize internal borrowing to support the purchase of public safety equipment, specifically three police pursuit vehicles, as well as equipment for the McMinnville Fire Department, including eight defibrillators, as well as a breathing air compressor and another command vehicle for the fire department. The internal borrowing for the airport fund would be going to replace a fuel tank there. So the reason why pursuing internal borrowing makes sense for capital replacement costs is because it is a lower cost of financing for the departments making the purchase. And then in terms of the fund that is lending the money, the wastewater capital fund, that allows them to use their excess cash and earn a slight premium over the interest allows them to use their excess cash and earn a slight premium over the interest rates that they are earning at the state local government investment pool. So it's a win-win for both sides. The total amount of the entire borrowing is $775,000, and it is reflected in all of these funds mentioned in their fiscal 2021 budget.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any questions of Jennifer?
Can we delay this as well?
Sure, I mean, you don't, you don't have to do it, we can, we can pull it, I'm not sure then if we...
Why would we delay it? Remy, why would we delay it?
Sorry, I'm getting there, I was flipping back and forth between screens. Just because it's addressing, just because we're talking about having some further conversations about our budget that are, you know, reflective of community conversation, and so to, to maybe have the opportunity to have slightly more thorough conversations with the community is why we would delay it, in my opinion. Or it's not, it's a question, really, more than an opinion, it's really a question.
I see no reason personally to delay it.
Any other comments?
I would be in favor of delaying the decision.
It is a funding mechanism for things that are already been talked about, though. So what I will, what I will ask then is, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2020-34?
I so move.
And do I have a second?
Second.
So it's been moved by Kelly and seconded by Adam. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Okay. This Resolution 2020-34 passes in a vote of five in favor and one in opposition. Okay, that takes us through our agenda for the city council this evening, and so I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the city council meeting, and we will roll right into the McMenville Urban Renewal Agency meeting of June 9, 2020. And so I'll just, again, for formality, if you would take a roll call of those in attendance.
Counselor Drabkin?
Present.
Counselor Garvin?
Here.
Counselor Geary?
Here.
Counselor Stassen?
Here.
Counselor Peralta?
Here.
Council President Minkie?
Here.
And Mayor Hill?
Here. And the purpose of this meeting is to have our public hearing on the proposed fiscal 2020, 2021 budget for the McMenville Urban Renewal Agency. And so with that, I'm going to open up the public hearing and ask Jennifer to present.
Yes, good evening. So this again is a, is a budget hearing to receive comment from the public on the urban renewal budget starting July 1 for next year. The hearing is required by local government budget law, and there was a publication of a summary of this budget published in the local paper on May 29. And we also, as in the case with, as the city budget, we included the mechanism of people being able to provide public comment ahead of time through the website or through email, and we did not receive, at least through the website, any public comment regarding the urban renewal budget. So that is the extent of my opening here. Any questions before you open it up for the public?
And Jennifer, from my perspective, as I've reviewed a tremendous number of emails on budget items, there was nothing related to the urban renewal district that I, because I read them all and forwarded those on to Jennifer, and I didn't see any of them at the urban renewal district. So it looks like we have no written testimony. So I will open up the public hearing then on the McMenville Urban Renewal fiscal year budget 2020, 2021. Is there anyone that would like to testify on that budget?
Mayor, no one has signed up to testify on this budget.
Thank you, Claudia. So I will go ahead and close the public hearing on the urban renewal budget. Item number three on our agenda this evening is a consent agenda, is the consent agenda, and it's to consider the minutes from our December 10, 2019 urban renewal agency meeting. Is there any counselor that would request to have this item taken off the consent agenda and heard later in the agenda? Seeing none, then I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Wendy and seconded by Kelly. All in favor that, in, all in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by saying nay. The consent agenda passes unanimously six to zero this evening. That's the only business that we had within our McMenville Urban Renewal Agency meeting this evening, so I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you, council, for your attentiveness this evening and your good questions, and any staff, again, thank you for all that you do, and anyone that's still on the line, thank you for your participation evening. This will close our Zoom meeting this evening. Thank you all.